I'm Sergeant Kevin Sheik, I'm part of the partnership prevention team that works in the city. I have geographical responsibility for the northern half of the city, so the north of the river, what historically was the west area, which is one of his major partners committee, is now covered by being, as it historically was. And Sergeant Nigel Ledbeater is not here this evening, but he covers the market. So, this report has been populated by quite a pair of us, so I will now go through what it says. Talking about the vote for this is continuation of licensed premises for forced visits. This has carried on, premises are routinely visited, there's been no breaches of conditions or any concerns at this time. The key venues are all monitored by the licensing officer and scored according to the Cardiff model. Does everyone know what the Cardiff model is? If it does good, it gets some plus points, if it does bad things, it gets some minus points. And essentially, it's much more complicated than that, but that's long short of it. It's a way of monitoring which premises are becoming problematic. The second priority was the violent crime in the city centre. We have dedicated resources which run an intelligence led operation towards issues in the city centre, which is part of our operation to connect. Again, the Cardiff model helps identify and gauge locations which are identified by drop support. So rather than just wandering around pieces of the city that look nice, we actually go to the places where historically information suggests there's going to be an issue. Okay, the third one was traffic junction enforcement, the general road safety for normal users. Starting the partnership prevention team, we continue to work hard to ensure that all road users are using the road appropriately. This work has carried out in a number of ways. There's been work on foot and in vehicle patrols in areas of address across the city. City centre team are particularly keen in its work carrying out patrols in the key locations in the city centre, a number of which have been mentioned here today. And I'm sure if you speak to the officers in the city centre there are well aware of where it is. And I personally find it exceptionally hard to walk through the city centre without having at least seven or eight conversations with the sergeant. Again, suffering from improper cycling. But while it's working excellently, there's considerable support from the upgrade community speed watch team, which is now moving extensively across the city. But, as always, anyone else who wants to join, please let us know. I have a very nice piece of soap, come and show you how it works and what you can do with it. It's a very impressive piece of kit. Cycle theft, we've continued to tackle cycle thefts across the city. During the recording period, there's been a number of course cyclers, large numbers of these have been linked to students and staff of various colleges across the area. There's been a key individual who was responsible for a significant amount of his theft. He keeps cutting his hair and not realising that he still looks the same. That's not a joke. And they go, "This is you?" And he goes, "No, it's not." "Is that you?" "No, it's not." Well, that's it. He's been to prison, he's come out of prison, he's probably going back to prison. So, as well as working around specific offenders who are obviously quite problematic, we're working in key hotspot locations. We have done some cycle marking events and the like. I don't think any of those have been on the west of the city, but they've been anchored in places where there are large amounts of bikes, so it's something potentially we could look at. And we are still trying to get community criminal behaviour... Real community, criminal behaviour, all right. Against this young gentleman with conditions around him and his bikes, and he's going to university land and the like. So, that's where we are. The next one is tackling rough sleeping in the city centre. City centre officers and our street office have continued to work with department regists to provide support and diversion for people who are rough sleeping. City council has a strategy which includes information card detailing where they can obtain assistance, which officers can share with their rough sleepers, so that work's still ongoing. And, just a very long one. Bloody right, my. Tackling drug dealing in the city centre, Hargreave and Cars Award. I know that Hargreave is actually in the north of the city, but it does butt up the cars, so it's not a major issue. Workers continue in the area to address some products of fibre in Cambridge. Work carried out takes place based on intelligence gathered by officers to target the most vulnerable people in our communities who allow their homes to be used and supplied class A drugs. Partnership prevention team have carried out a range of enforcement action, which has led to a number of people being charged with relevant offences regarding the sale of class A drugs. A number of people are currently on bail whilst inquiries are completed. As well as the work to deal with the people who supply drugs, we've worked and we continue to work with a wider number of support agencies to support those people who are using and trying to stop them and then make positive changes in their lives. That work again is very much driven by the constabulary's opinion of looking at the threat, risk and harm of an issue. So our enforcement actions are based around making sure that if people are being exploited, having their property used, that is where our enforcement action is targeted. And last but not least, theft of vehicles in Newton. There's been a number of theft of vehicles over the recording period, and most of these have been builders banned in the area. Patrols have been carried out in the area, the provincial advice has been passed on only the vanos themselves, but the people that were having a building were carried out. These issues are similar to other areas in the city, and most of them are located south of the city, where there are a large number of tradesmen working. So basically, when there's lots of people working, there's lots of bans being broken into. We have our investigation department have written a extensive patrol plan which is carried out by not only our teams, but also supported by the wider policing teams across the city. Do you have any words? Or are there a lot of questions?
Yes, well, I have a question. I couldn't work it out quite. It cares that January to May shows a rise everywhere.
Right.
I want to know why.
January to May, or... Yes?
Do you want me to answer this one, Kevin?
It's everywhere. It's not just the western city, it's even on the north of already. And when I looked at the figures, it was across the whole force, so I'm making a cross over there.
Yes, I was asked about this earlier, and we've been looking at it. What we've seen is an increase in crime generally, not just in the city centre and west areas, but across Cambridge city, across the force, across England and Wales. And what, looking a bit more deeply into the issue, seems to be behind it is much tighter crime recording standards. And we're recording a lot of things as crimes, where it's on the balance of probabilities a crime has taken place, whereas previously, we may not have been as tight in the recording there. And the reason we're trying to make sure that recording is really tight is about crime data integrity, and it's about making sure that that crime data is accurate. And previously, perhaps if we may turn up at an incident where outside a pub, people have been pushing and shoving each other, and the officers might have used a more pragmatic approach and just sent people on their way and made sure that violence and disorder had finished. Now, if six people have pushed and shoved each other, we'll record six crimes assault. So, figures have gone up, and to try and make sure that there isn't an underlying issue around an actual increase in serious violence. As Chair of the Alcohol Related Violent Crime Group, I've looked into the figures in the city centre, and what we've seen is that actually assaults with injury, which are the most serious assaults, have actually decreased. Assaults without injury, which would tend to be the lower level assaults, whether it is people pushing and shoving each other, have gone up. Which would tend to support our hypothesis that it's around tighter crime recording standards. We've also looked at the Adam Brooks A and E data about people coming into Adam Brooks, and they've been assaulted, and the ambulance pickup data for the city. Both of those show a reduction in people being picked up or going to A and E from the city who are reporting having been assaulted. So we think that is what it's about, is about tighter crime recording standards.
We also, like I say, we take third party reports now. I did, when I wrote this report, and I wrote the northern one, the report, and about two days later, the north, because it has a heavier amount of crime, because it's a bigger area, it's kind of quite a noticeable thing. So I checked Peterborough's numbers, saw as the boss says they were the same, and suddenly didn't feel like the Armageddon was coming, and it was... I'm sure you mentioned Armageddon, the church.
Thank you very much.
One of the most shocking things in this report, replacing report, in the environmental data report, it says that the number of needles claimed at the environmental team has risen from six last year to 476 before Blackwater this year. Now perhaps that's insignificant, and someone's just dropped 400 needles which are claimed, and it's a coincidence, but it looks extremely worrying considering all the issues with drug dealing.
I haven't noticed an increase in the amount of injury, interveas, drug use going on. Six just seemed amazingly low. I don't know whether they're starting recording things differently, and it's not a question I'd be asked to do, but if you look at the fact of saying, "Have I noticed?" Ah, there's Wendy, Wendy, I know. I don't know.
If you like. Can we move on to the next question? Before we leave, or do you want to wait for me to get?
I can just answer all these ones.
So, look, Wendy's section, and my question is really if, is there an increase in drug dealing? Do you think the problem?
No, I don't think there's... That would be, oh my word, my maths is not good on a Wednesday evening, but that would be a significantly catastrophic change, and there simply hasn't been... It's not happened.
Thank you. I wanted to ask a question about enforcement and policing with traffic. Going back earlier on this year, a statement on enforcement says, "As a precursor to community speed watch operations on certain roads, traffic data boxes are employed to check on average speeds." And I did notice, I think probably a couple of months ago, Wendy made this call, so I noticed a number of them around the town. I don't know whether that has to do with the city deal, or whether these are police traffic data boxes, but they do... The police used to publish the data from these data boxes, which are in place for often quite a considerable period of time, on their website. They no longer do so, there are no figures available. So how are, how are average speeds made available? Are they actually measured anywhere?
I can't understand that, that's what I see from the... But I make, that's made outside of the team I work on, I can't answer that question.
Do you know if they use traffic data boxes?
I know that our speed watch team, the community speed watch team, they have that equipment, but I don't have anything to do with that, so unless the boss makes more than me, it's outside our remit.
Yeah, we can find out the answer to that for you. The team who now come out to do the speed monitoring in locations are a tri-force collaborated team, so we're collaborating with Bedfordshire and Hertfordshire. They do still come out and do monitoring of average speeds at locations, but I'm not sure exactly which locations they've been to recently and what the results of those were. So we can try and find out for you, because I know the council also do a lot of the monitoring in areas, so the fact the box was there doesn't necessarily mean it was ours, but we can find out for you and report back in the next area committee meeting.
Thank you, I appreciate that, but they're not published on your website, so we don't have any public access to these figures. They're usually going back several years, I've archived them, but that's no, that's no real interest for figures, you know, a number of years ago. So, I was...
That's quite possibly because it's now a collaborative team, so they may be on a different website. Again, I'll try and find out for you and provide, I'll go through the city council, send out a link to the website if we find where that information now is.
That would be very useful, because I have no, I cannot get any information on the results of any traffic enforcement, because it's done on this tri-force basis. The figures don't seem to be available, I've been told that figures aren't available because of that, which means it's very hard to know any if what enforcement has been, is actually taking place around the city of the 20 mile an hour, because we just don't, the figures don't seem to be available, so how, when, when the police are asked to look at 20 mile an hour enforcement, we don't know what is being done. There are only vague remarks about, "Oh, well, we look at it on a regular basis," etcetera, etcetera, but we don't have any figures, we can't say.
At the moment, because I want to be completely open and transparent about the situation, there is not enforcement, people being issued with tickets around the 20 mile an hour limits. The 20 mile an hour limits, that's where we're encouraging the use of community speed watch. And part, part of the issue is around the speed monitoring as well, and the average speed monitoring, is also looking at proportionality of enforcement around 20 mile an hour speed limits, because what we need to make sure, following ACPO guidance, that actually the street and road environment is such that the 20 mile an hour speed limit is suitable, so it's proportionate for us to enforce. So, in terms of enforcement, the reality will be that there will be very few, if any, drivers, having been prosecuted recently for exceeding the 20 mile an hour limits. It's something we're actively looking at at the minute, but we need to make sure that action's proportionate.
I've been banging on about this issue for six years, since Main Course Way in August 2010 had a 20 mile limit installed. And I think there's only one instance where I've actually felt that a really good bit of enforcement took place, but that was only for a 30 limit, when a 20 limit was actually enforced.
Yeah.
Because the police were looking at education. Now, as far as I'm concerned, and the police say community speed watches, education, it's not enforcement, so the police aren't doing any enforcement. But ACPO did actually, ACPO did write to the parliamentary group on cycling and say, "When drivers are regularly and willfully breaking the law, they will be prosecuted." So, that is happening, I'm telling you, Main Course Way on a regular basis. Speeds are there, are frequently well above the 20 limit, but since we don't have any figures through many traffic monitoring, I don't think the police are actually enforcing a particular road. When the traffic's moving freely, traffic speeds can be quite high. But I don't seem to have any hope, even reading this guidance from ACPO, that any enforcement is ever going to take place. This is six years down the line.
Well, what we're trying to satisfy is that when it comes to the 20 mile an hour limit, we're actually not just relying on enforcement to try and get drivers to drive 20 miles an hour, because just imposing a 20 mile an hour limit, suddenly expecting everyone to drive at 20 miles an hour, isn't necessarily going to work unless there are physical improvements that are made that are referred to in the ACPO guidance, and other things done to try and encourage driver behaviour to reduce this.
Yeah, I am aware of that, I have read the comments.
So, just relying on police enforcement is very difficult, because we don't have the capacities, I've said at other area committee meetings, to just be out all the time enforcing 20 mile an hour limits, and we need to work with our partners in the council and highways to try and make sure that actually we're looking at the wider issue.
I'm sorry.
And getting people to reduce this.
But the fact is, nobody is going to remodel Main Course Way, because it's a major basript. So we're left with a situation where I do, I'll read this out from you, from ACPO, "Where drivers are regularly and willfully breaking the law, we would expect the officers will enforce the limit and prosecute offenders." That's what ACPO have said to the parliamentary group on cycling. And I do think that actually applies in the case of Main Course Way, because it's a wide road, when traffic is freely moving, the speeds are high. And when the officer, who came from North Cambridgeshire, he had a police car, he hid behind the door with his light gun, and he measured traffic, he got a bus full of passengers that was breaking the 30 limit, and he said plenty of people were breaking the 30 limit when the 20 limit was enforced. So, I don't think that anybody is, has any discouragement in Main Course Way for breaking, from not, from, from obeying by the law. They have no encouragement to obey by the law, because they know they can get away with it, because I don't think that any enforcement is taking place. If you do some enforcement, the message will get around that you're doing something. But all we've ever heard on the front page of this local newspaper is, "Please not to enforce 20 limits." That is all we've ever heard, "Not please to enforce 20 limits," on an occasional basis. But no, it's always been negative, and this is the situation.
I think we've moved on to an important note, and I think this is such an important matter, and I think one of the problems with the traffic and highways, and I think council how, hold to myself, experienced it when we were trying to deal with the passage of HGVs coming up here, I mean, which was utterly intolerable. One of the problems is the, the way the police force now, the responsibilities, I think, traffic and highways are Bedfordshire and Hertfordshire. I mean, when I got to the right people, we were able to get the right people in to enforce the HGVs and work with highways agency and highways England. But there is a real problem of the geographical location. So for us sitting here, you know, trying to, you know, voicing our problems to PC Mysick, you know, it's quite understandable that he can't do this. And what would be really helpful is to have some sort of, if we could just be given as councillors, a simple list with who are the officers, and which counties, which forces, Bedfordshire, Hertfordshire, Cambridgeshire, and what they're responsible for, and how we can contact them easily in order to get enforcement. So that's just a suggestion for the next area committee.
Thanks Chair. Through you. The officer says that enforcement alone isn't enough to get the message out that people should be driving 20 miles an hour, but there doesn't seem to be enforcement. Actually, it seems as if the 20 mile an hour thing is advisory, and because it's a new scheme, the impression will strengthen among drivers, that they don't really need to drive at 20 miles an hour, it's sort of a funny thing that they do in cities in some places. It's been put in place for a reason, to try and bring speeds down to make the road safe. And actually, we're trying to encourage a major modal shift towards cycling and walking, and the cyclists are afraid to go on the road, because they get bullied by cars whizzing along. This happens all the time on Main Course Way and Mill Road. You're frightened when you cycle along there by cars, you think, "Oh, I can get through these lights if I just put my foot down." It's endemic, and then the cyclists move onto pavements, and the pedestrians are frightened, cyclists are running around on pavements. If the roads were just enforced to make the 20 mile an hour limit, a 20 mile an hour limit, it would be so much good for the safety of the city.
In terms of the desired outcome of traffic travelling more slowly on 20 miles an hour on inappropriate roads, I fully support that. What I'm concerned about is that we've not properly thought through how we're going to get to that desired outcome, and just saying, "Well, we'll put a 20 mile an hour limit there and get the police to come along and try and enforce it," is perhaps not the best way, because there are some 20 mile an hour limits in the county, and they are absolutely fantastic, they've been there for some time, and actually the traffic goes really slowly, and it's quite difficult to travel at more than 20 miles an hour in them, and they're really effective. But, we need to look more widely at how we're going to achieve that desired outcome, and just, there is research that has been done elsewhere, that I've seen, where if inappropriate speed limits are put on roads, actually what is found is that the average speeds on those roads increases, because drivers just think, "Oh, this is patently ridiculous," and don't try and comply with any speed limit whatsoever. And we've seen sort of evidence-based research into where that has happened. And I just want to make sure that we're not going to face the same sort of issue in the city, and that we do think through how to get the traffic travelling more slowly where it needs to.
CCTV is being put up around the city to replace the wallage for the course game. There may be more cameras appearing as part of the city deals game, whatever it comes up with in January. Are the police working with the county to try and make sure cameras are able to detect breaches of the 20 mile an hour limit to standardise?
They don't probably have cameras that will do 20 mile an hour limits.
You'd need two kinds of cameras to do that, you'd need a speed camera, you'd need a CCTV camera, they can't do the same, they can't do the same job.
Colin, would you like to ask your question?
We've got a related cycle safety issue, and that is, a number of police forces around the country have started enforcing motor vehicles that don't leave enough space for cycles. That is a non-trivial problem in Cambridge. And it starts with words of advice, but it's a matter where driver education and ultimately enforcement is needed for the safety of cyclists, because there are problems with motor vehicles coming into contact with cyclists simply because they go too close to them. And that's been recognised by a number of forces, and have taken up quite strongly. I'm not heard of it in Cambridge, we have a lot more cyclists here, and we also have some drivers who behave terribly. I've been cut out by buses on bike, for example. If you stand at the New Market Road coming into town from the east, the number of motor vehicles turning left into East Road that indicate that they're doing so is a tiny proportion. So, and those are just examples of bad conduct driver behaviour, where an officer on his tea break could educate quite a few people.
In defence of the officer's on his tea break, he's on his tea break. The idea is when you have a break, it actually at work. I appreciate what you're saying, I'll have a look, I'll see if there is national units out there and see if there's anything that our casualty reduction team or the, we can put out along those lines.
Thank you. Kind of related to speeding drivers, and I've particularly noticed this down Emmanuel Street, when I'm waiting to catch buses fairly late at night following, like council meetings, is drivers who drive cars with illegally souped up engines. It's an issue I've raised before, it's something that I seem to be coming across more and more, and it is incredibly irritating. Now, the last time I raised it, I think it was a different area committee, I was told by one of your officers that the modifications actually breach the law. And actually, I got a tweet, I think, or a text from your headquarters saying, "There are specific breaches to the law relating to antisocial behaviour," but also potentially driving a car without insurance, because the modifications that are made to the engines actually invalidate the insurance policies. So, I just wondered what your procedures were with dealing with those motorists as they drive past with their incredibly loud engines, in terms of stopping them being able to test them or requiring them to bring their cars into your facilities to have them tested so that, you know, you can get them off the road. Thank you.
That, that will be work carried out by our road policing unit. That's what they do, their job is to enforce that kind of stuff. Me and my officers don't spend enough time in cars to get behind anybody who draws like that, to do that kind of work, we don't have that kind of expertise, so that will be something done by the road policing.
I'm wondering whether there's also potentially in part a technological solution to it, similar to where you have CCTV cameras, safety cameras, just by having some sound monitors. I mean, I spend half my time dealing with audio issues with this thing, and I'm just wondering whether there's any technology out there that you could just have small sound sensors by your, for example, some of your major road junctions, so that as soon as the cars set off, that's when they floor the accelerator and that's when they make the most noise.
I think there's all kinds of issues about sound monitoring around junctions that I'd hate to get into, in terms of what you might accidentally pick up. It seems that kind of work with inappropriate vehicles and vehicles being used appropriately that sits with our local policing unit, and they can do, deal with things. It potentially validates insurance, if you don't tell your insurance company you've done it. And there is potentially, if you have told your insurance company you've done it, then they'll just charge more money.
Well, I'm, sorry. I'm going to have just one more question. Sorry.
Could I raise the question in the report about rough sleeping, please? We've learned recently that there is more than doubling of the extent of rough sleeping in the city, and a lot of that, I think I'm right in saying, is in the city centre. Three questions really. What is the, how do you describe the police's role in helping with the situation? Secondly...
Do you want to answer me, and I'll answer?
I will ask you the three together.
You do, I've forgotten the first question.
No, you won't. Very simple question. One is, how do you see the role of the police in helping address this problem of rough sleeping? Second is, how you would see that changing, given that the problem has doubled? And thirdly, there's a reference here to begging and encouraging people to give instead to charity, which is a very longstanding campaign from the city council and others, and very good. But the question I wanted to ask in relation to that here was, how are the police actually addressing the begging itself? Because that, I think, remains an offence.
Oh, yes, yes.
And it would be interesting to understand how you see that being tackled.
Right, okay. Question, answer to question one. I think it's important, rough sleeping is devilistically, in terms of there is a large amount of support and a large amount of other welfare agencies that go on there. Unfortunately, sometimes... Unfortunately, sometimes people don't want to engage and aren't potentially at the right point in their life to do it. And I have for a long time viewed the role of the police in this inquiry as the stick to the carrot. Play nicely with the street outreach team, they'll help you. Play nicely with the people at across the way at Willow Wharf and they'll help you. Talk to the councilman, they'll accommodate you. If you don't, come and play with us. And it's worked quite well for a number of years. Begging is still illegal, we take enforcement action and there are... I know Nigel's got his team out doing some placards work around there. I don't want to... are you speaking about your project here? The ultimate gimmick scheme has been rebranded and now looks amazingly good, but that's council's one. So the idea is, it's long and it's complicated, but you don't help somebody by giving them a pound sitting on the floor. You make them, you keep them homeless. So the idea is if you can find a way to get that good feeling and I want to help that person by giving them money appropriately, then you can help them rather than keep them where they are. Is that about it, or is that...?
Yeah, I've got some information about that here. It's called Cambridge Street Aid and it's a way of people being able to sort of lose change into somebody's hat to text a donation to a particular fund. Support workers working with individuals on the street and then applying to that fund for items that can help that person get off the streets such as, or it could be anything. It could be clothing, it could be assistance with items for their hostel accommodation, training, anything that might help them move away from life on the streets. So I've got some information about that here. Since it was launched on the 28th of November, we've had £1,300 donated, which I think is quite good. So that now sits in the fund and people who have a street background can, you know, through us, support workers and like that. So we're hoping eventually, longer term, discouraged people can give directly to beggars. And maybe that may create a less lucrative place for beggars to come, so.
Yes, the question I wanted to ask is, the councillors say...
councillor Bix still got question two in there. And I knew I'd forget three. We asked three and I remembered one and I remember three. The police role.
So I think you've answered the question about the police role. I think you've answered pretty much the question about begging. But the question about the fact we've had such a dramatic increase in rough sleeping, how you see the police responding to the doubling of the problem?
The issue around prosecution of rough sleeping is a very political one and it's one we will not do. We have historically been a specific case prosecuted for rough sleeping and the response we got from the magistrate's court wasn't very positive. And yeah, not going to admit what happened there. Our role is very much to make people engage and to make them understand that the choice of disengaging from the support and just choosing to live on the streets and do nothing is probably not one that is... I think I've said to one of the council officers many times that Cambridge has a lot of toys in it. If you want to come and play with my toys, you have to play by my rules. If you want to come and live in the city and get the outstanding support that comes from Winter Comfort and the council and the street outreach team and all these people, great, come here, they'll help you, they'll help you. As Sarah says, they'll give you the money, they'll support you and they'll move you on. However, I have to come to work, I have to pay my mortgage and I have to pay my tax. If you come to Cambridge and stay here, you have to abide by the rule of the land and the rules of the city. And that's kind of where we stand in making sure that those people do. Also, there are issues around reconnection with people who aren't here. We've done some work with the UK Border Agency around treaty rights and the like around that as well, which hopefully will have a reduction in the number of people who aren't rough sleeping. Whether A, reconnecting them or B, pushing them into engaging and pushing them into living their life in a more positive way. Does that answer the question?
Well, it still doesn't really address, that says what you have been doing.
Yeah.
But now we can all see the problems doubled. Does that say that something...
The issue is the role of the street outreach team was historically funded by the City Council. Is this a question you're asking me?
I'm asking you whether the...
It's not going to be funded anymore. They've withdrawn the funding from the dedicated officer. And that is now a decision that I don't know the answer to. That is a decision that I don't know what the future will bring and what it will hold. That is a conversation that Nigel will host the portfolio, the chief inspector in the council need to have. Going forward, I don't know is the answer. But I think it's what we were driving towards, wasn't it?
So the council are now going to tell us that every penny that we give to their charitable appeal will be spent on rough sleeping and homelessness. Why can't they give us that same assurance about hundreds of thousands of pounds worth of public money being spent on rough sleeping and homelessness in the city?
That's a council question, I'm a police officer. I don't know.
I wasn't particularly addressing it.
All right, I just thought we were doing police questions, that's why I'm slightly confused.
It's in the policing item because they...
All right, fair enough, no good, I understand now, I was a little bit confused.
Thank you, it was to pick up on Tim's point about what actions you as a police force are able to take against rough sleepers in the city centre. I just wondered whether you have been working at all with the fire service on the potential fire risk that is posed by people sleeping in large quantities of carpooling doorways?
We've worked with the fire service around squatting previously, around obviously the appropriateness of where people are saying potential fire risk and that as they have some fairly significant power around there. I must have been, that's a really good idea that I had thought of. Thank you, I will pass that on to Ben and that certainly... I've always stumbled on the idea of a number of things about a carpool, but that's a new one and it's, I think, my work, worth trying.
Right, I'm going to try and wind it up soon, please have a quick...
I have a request, because the Cambridge Street Aid Fund, is the... Is it possible for people to simply walk in off the street into the Guildhall, into the main reception and make a donation? Do we have that facility?
Because it's all managed by...
Sorry, a second, a second. And then supplementary to that is that this afternoon I was walking around the city centre and I came across two homeless young men looking for £12.50 to pay for their night shelter. You're shaking your head, no, as, sorry, I'm on housing scrutiny, so this really does concern me. And I know David Greening, the Housing Homeless Strategy Officer, is writing a report to brief us on what Tim Bix identified, the rise in homelessness. But to me, it seems if we had the access into the Guildhall for residents simply to go to the main desk, make a donation, and then for those who need their £12.50 for the hostel or whatever, that they should be able to go into the Guildhall and at least register to access that service. I'm simply asking, is that possible?
The hostels cost nothing. The hostels are free, that is a tactic they use to beg for money. I believe you can pay by text messages at that one.
The street aid scheme is, we don't handle the money. There's been several attempts at the alternative giving scheme before. And the first attempt was where there was donation boxes, it was quite difficult to administer that money once it was collected, once it was donated. This scheme takes that away. The Cambridgeshire Community Foundation are managing that fund on behalf of the street aid. So if people want to donate money, they can do it by text or they can go onto the Cambridgeshire Community Foundation website and do it by JustGiving. So there are other ways of doing it, but there won't be collection boxes at this stage. Because that adds a whole different element, we have to then collect that money and it becomes complicated.
And the second thing, for the homeless person to come in and register in the Guildhall, that was my second question, the homeless person to come into the Guildhall or some public point to say, I want to immediately access that fund, is that possible?
No, they need to go via their support worker. So we've been also giving out these cards to rough sleepers and beggars with details of the places they can go to get information. So it's got the details of Winter Comfort, Jimmy's, Police Station, City Council. So if they need support, they can come into City Council, street outreach and go out and engage with them on the street to give them support. What we find is quite often they don't want that support and they won't engage. And they don't have to hand over any cash at the hostel or Jimmy's. So they don't need that £12.50 to get into Jimmy's.
I was going to ask, can we have the text number for that?
Yeah, I've got cards here, I'll leave them there for you.
Yeah, I was going to ask about, it's not necessarily a police priority thing because I think it's a bit too specific. But, sorry, yeah, sorry. It's not necessarily a police priority issue because I think it's a little too specific. But there has been over the years persistent parking in the mandatory cycle lane in Downing Street next to the Revolution bar. And I'm aware that it isn't something that the civil enforcement officers deal with. I can't remember why, but I'm aware that it isn't. And I think it's, I'm wondering what action the police can take to offer maybe strong word of advice to the bar who allow them to park there and others who do that because it's a danger to cyclists and it's a danger procession because they block the path.
I imagine the officers, if they see it, would do that. And I will have a conversation with Nigel to make sure his team's breaking along those lines.
Thank you.
I'm going to wind up, let's open it up, sorry.
I can do something, thank you though. I spoke to Sergeant Nedbetter and he is, well, he said that he would be following that up and he was grateful for the video that was shown, so. Thanks Chair, yeah, I spoke to Sergeant Nedbetter about this specific issue as well. He said that he was going to speak to Revolution about the poor behaviour of unloading during busy time. It didn't sound as if prosecution or a strong warning or anything like that was in the thinking. I think it was going to be a caution because it was seen as something that was done very few times a year. So yeah, I would like strong words to be had, I don't think it's going to happen.
So we have two recommendations for the police to concentrate on going forward. Antisocial behaviour associated with rough sleeping, which has been discussed at high length this evening, and alcohol-related violence within the night-time economy. Has anybody got any other issues?
It's not really a different, it's just to pick up on what Sergeant Missick was saying about the high rates of crime of vehicle theft from builders' vans, which while it probably doesn't affect any of the people in this room, I think is something that we should take seriously. And if that is only increased, I think it would be sensible for that to remain. I mean, I imagine it will remain on the police priority in any case because it's coming down, okay.
So I suggest we take a 10-minute break now. Oh, we haven't voted on that, I beg your pardon. So we have, the first proposal is that we have concentrate on antisocial behaviour associated with rough sleeping. So does everybody agree with that or does anybody want to...
Sergeant Missick was saying earlier, I'm a little bit concerned, I understand what you're saying, but a little bit concerned about the way he's described the role of the police. I hope in the 21st century we haven't got to such a harsh situation that our police are just there for enforcement.
No, we don't, we don't, trust me.
And therefore, I think we should modify that recommendation to include, to continue to work with agencies. You know, basically combine it with the priority before. So it actually is addressing those with antisocial behaviour, but it's also working with them to...
That's a fairly broad stroke of discussion of what we do. It's the headline. Ben's very, very good and he's not quite as evil as I make him out to be.
And I think that we should continue to have a police party for, given the fact that we've had a number of questions around it this evening around antisocial use of the highway, if you like, because I think it continues to be a key area.
I think what all I would say about that, councillor, is I would like it to be, as you've quoted there, a wider road safety issue rather than a targeting anyone individual kind of review.
Thanks Chair, I did think that there would be a round of suggestions for priorities as well as voting on the ones that the police put forwards. I support what councillor Cairn said. I think the, I hope that the language of coming to Cambridge and playing with our toys isn't useful in speaking with homeless people. It's a bit of a patronising way to deal with such a sensitive issue.
As I said, that is when I spoke to a council officer, I can talk to the public about that.
And the antisocial driving issue, the examples of that might be the inappropriate use of junctions like Trumpington Road, trying to turn when there isn't room to turn and blocking the highway, blocking the cycle lanes, using mobile phones while driving. There seems to be a lot of it going on. I'm confident that these are the same people that go off and have crashes on motorways afterwards. If it's not stopped early on, then the behaviour continues.
Right, I think we're going to have to rework this, these issues. Colin, did you want to add something?
On the vehicle, I thought it was an important point to be picked up on just by Sergeant Missick, which is that...
Vehicle theft or...
The concentration on the misbehaviour of vehicles should be on dangers to the public. The priority should be the activities that are most dangerous to the public. In what I recall, I suppose the cyclist seems dangerous to themselves. But unfortunately, motor vehicles are capable of greater damage than bicycles are.
Right, so it looks, sorry.
Yeah, we haven't, we talked about cycle, cycling in the wrong direction. And that's not one of the recommendations. And I'm with councillor Cairn on, I think antisocial behaviour associated with rough sleeping, the wording on that is really harsh. And something more proactive about, you know, supporting Cambridge Street Aid is a more positive way.
Can you say, microphone, please?
Could we refer to it as problematic rough sleeping because not all the rough sleepers we deal with are problematic? So the ones we tend to work closely with are the ones that are causing the most problems in the city, whether it's litter, you know, go to toilet doorways and things like that. So maybe that would be an option.
So we've now got four issues, if I'm correct. We've got problematic rough sleeping, we've got night-time difficulties, we've got vehicle theft and we've got inappropriate cycling and or road use. Are you happy for me to have those rephrased and handed over or do you want to do it now? I need to do it now? Okay. Yes, why don't we take a break and come back and do it? And we'll rephrase while you're taking a break. Lucy, did you want to add something before?
I was just concerned about the phrase problematic rough sleeping. I think part of what we're trying to do is to make it clear in this objective that what we want the police to do is to help support people into alternative accommodation rather than deal with a law enforcement issue. And our original, the original objective was to reduce, well, it's got reduce antisocial behaviour, can't we? Rather than having, dealing, sorry, I'm looking at the wall plate. I wondered if we could just have something about reducing rough sleeping because actually what we want to do is to try and help these people into more suitable accommodation. So I don't think we necessarily want to be referring to problematic rough sleeping. I think we want to just reduce the numbers overall by supporting people into different accommodation.
So I'm really concerned about the level of violent crime in the city centre and I don't think the proposal of night-time problems really covers that. Can I suggest that when you set your priorities, councillors, you listen to what the inspector said and get some information on the degree of injuries? Now, the inspector's given some ideas of where that can come from, it can come from the ambulance data, it can come from A and E. Now, he's told you about that data, why not get that here next time? So instead of the violent crime statistics just going up by one when there's a major stabbing on Fair Street just 200 metres away from here, or where people are getting broken bones late in the evening, broken jaws you can read about in the Cambridge news. That kind of thing is just a plus one on your violent crime statistic just to say someone touching someone else and reporting it as a violent crime. So you can get much better information if you requested it. So you can get much better information if you requested it. And so I think when you've got those kind of things, we should even have a sentence about the stabbing in a report to this meeting. And you could ask the police to communicate a lot better. When that stabbing occurred on Fair Street, the police said nothing about it for many hours. They didn't say anything in that evening when there was a rumour that the stabbing had taken place. You could ask them to communicate better to either reassure or warn people. And I think that would help people protect themselves from violent crime. So I think you could now, when you come back, you can make a real difference. You could prevent people from having injuries. Which would be a substantial thing you could do this evening if you focused the police priorities in that way. I think the one proposed is very vague. Well, you can propose it, you're a councillor.
We're talking about wording. So would you like to... Just wording.
Yeah, I'm happy to take specifics around, so if we prioritise the issue of violent crime in the city centre, I'll make a note that what we mean by that is also greater data, greater detail around the data. So breaking it down by what is with injury, what series injury, what's without injury. Also, some of the data we have is now starting to specify certainly the A and E data around where the weapons were used. So we can say how many assaults were with a fist, with a knife, you know. We can give you much more meaningful information, which I'm really keen to do because the numbers are just numbers. Without the context, they tell you very, very little. So I'm happy to take that away as part of the priority.
Yeah, but if it's not an additional administrative burden, it can be done easily at the average cost and that's...
It's something that we already look at as part of the alcohol-related violent crime group. So I can just bring that information to this meeting as well and it will all be sanitised. So it's not an issue of data protection or personal information. It's stuff that we can provide.
Thank you very much. I think I'm going to adjourn at this point and we're going to try and rework and bring it back to you after the break in about ten or fifteen minutes. And then we'll take votes.